And for supporting a fee.
I'm not in favor of a fee or a permit.
I kind of agree with Mike. I don't see where we need a permit or a fee for it. I think we could, um, what's the word I want to use? I think we could, um, control it just by, um, people seeing them.
These folks here, I'm sure will follow any ordinance that we put out there. I don't have any problem with that at all. But you're going to have, you need the permit. People need to have that in their little hands saying, okay, I can do this, or I can't do this. As far as a fee, yeah, the city has, um, processing that they're doing. That's cost out of our pockets. That's, I don't know why a fee would be, especially a $10 fee or something like that. That's minimal. I don't see a problem with that whatsoever. But I would like to see a permit.
Where are you at, Dave?
I thought you asked a really good question, Roger. What's the point of the permit? What I hear is that we're a complaint-driven enforcement system. I don't think anybody's going to complain that so-and-so doesn't have a permit. And like Bill was saying earlier, if it's not posted, why would they know either way? And so now we're creating, I mean, the things people are going to complain about don't hinge on a permit or not. So if that's not driving anything, and we're having people come in, and we're having staff take time, and we're asking people to pay money to have staff take time to do the permit, and it doesn't do anything, I have trouble supporting that. On the other hand, I'm not sure a complaint-driven system is very effective for us in ordinance enforcement.
It's terrible.
So if we're not going to enforce ordinances now, and we're not enforcing ordinances in the future effectively, I'm not sure I really care that much what the ordinance says.
Can I add to my two cents real quick? Joel, I don't know if Joel would be mad at me for saying something like this, but we're, we are complaint-driven right now, but I think the whole point of redoing all of these ordinances is to get to a point where we are enforcing the new ordinances. So I don't want everybody thinking that we're going to just continue to be complaint-based process. I mean, the point of redoing all these, I believe, I haven't said it in very many of the meetings, but is to get ahead of that and to change the way that we are doing it. But we want the, want good information and that to go off of. So I don't think the goal is city or staff-wise to continue complaint-based. We want to enforce what we have, but we want to make what we have good before we start doing it, if that makes sense.
So if the subcommittee talked about moving away from a complaint-driven system, what was the subcommittee's conclusion on this?
We didn't discuss a complaint-driven system or not, but that is how the animal ordinance has been before. If a dog is barking incessantly, then a neighbor would call and make the complaint, and then law enforcement would go look into that. I see that as the same way with this ordinance, where if there are more chickens, like 20 chickens on someone's property, then a neighbor would make that complaint, and then law enforcement would go out and look into it to see if they were complying with the ordinance. Now, if we as a council have a problem with the way that our ordinances are being enforced, that's something that we need to really discuss with the city manager, so he can talk to his department head about that and change the way that those ordinances are being enforced. And I think that was one thing that Teresa had talked about with kind of listing out what our thoughts were on ordinance enforcement, whether we want a warning system, or we're going to go straight to a citation and go from there. But in the end, it's up to us how those ordinances are enforced. And if we're not happy with it, then we need to make that very clear to our staff, so they begin to do things differently. And we have all been told by the chief of the way that he does things, and if we're not happy, then we've just got to tell him, no, we are not okay with taking a more lenient approach.
So I guess, I'm sorry, were you going to say something?
No, go ahead.
The enforcement, or lack thereof, doesn't really have anything to do with the permit. Except that it might give us a better idea of who has chickens. But if somebody's going to, a $10 permit fee is not going to make them comply or not, comply or not. So I think we're dealing with two separate issues. If, if, yeah, if the permit doesn't really serve a purpose, I don't think we should give extra work to city staff, and we shouldn't charge a fee to people if we don't need to. I mean, if that, if, and then we can deal with the enforcement side separately. I don't see how this is changing whether people are complying or not.
And that's, I guess that's where I was at with the staff having the extra work to do the permit. You know, read the application and do the submit, the permit. I don't think any of you are looking for extra work.
My thought on it, when we're doing, redoing the ordinances was, wasn't complaint-based versus non-complaint-based, because the majority of all ordinance enforcement is always going to be complaint-based, unless if we're going to go out and inspect everybody's property all the time and proactively inspect areas that we can't see from the public. And that's not going to go over well, because we can't do that. You need warrants to go in places. So it's always going to be a complaint-based, except for things that are visible from the outside. If it's in the backyard and it's only the neighbor that sees it, of course, we're only ever going to find out through a complaint. A lot of our changing in the ordinances were more aimed at making sure that Jay and the police had clear ordinances that they could enforce, because some of them they had issues with, where it's like, it's just we can't enforce this, because it's just, it's not written in any way that we can enforce it easily. So that was part of, and I kind of liked making sure that this ordinance is spelled out, like this is the rules. Because otherwise, when we don't have it nice and clear and concise, it's very difficult for them to enforce. So that was part of when we were rewriting them, was looking at that and talking with Jay and others. Why is this not enforceable, or why are you having a hard time enforcing this? And how do we change this to make it work? But I think we're always going to be complaint-based, you know, other than rental inspections. But we're going to have issues even with rental inspections, because there's already been court cases in Illinois that you don't have to allow people in to do a rental inspection. They need a warrant. Of court cases, so that's going to be a whole another one. And then doing excessive fines, like, oh, you're not letting us inspect, excessive fines. They said, nope, can't do that. So no matter what, we're always a complaint-based, I think. And we're not going to get away from complaint-based, because the other way is proactive, and we just can't do every property and inspect other than what they see from the street, and just enforce what we can see.
Peter, what are your thoughts on the permit?
I could go either way on it. I, I understand why to have it is, the reason I think to have it is the person's informed of the rules.
Exactly.
That was my main thing, is you're informed of the rules. Here's the pamphlet, here's the ordinance, here's the rules, here's the fines if you don't follow it, and we can revoke your permit if you decide not to follow our ordinance. It's kind of, it's more of an enforcement arm of it. Otherwise, we're tying our hands and not having as much capability of enforcement, but just fines. Because we wouldn't be able to revoke and say, you know what, you haven't been following the rules. We're revoking this because we just have trouble with this. We said no roosters, there's a rooster. You've come out here three, four times, and there's still a rooster. What do you do then? You can revoke it, and then it's immediate fines if they still keep chickens on property. So it's, for me, either way, it's enforceable. It's just with the revocation, it just gives you one more lever to do as an enforcement. You got warning, fine, fine, we're revoking, you just can't have chickens anymore at all. Because otherwise, I don't think you would have that without the permitting process, because it would just be an ordinance, and as an ordinance, everybody would be able to, to do it, and we couldn't prevent anybody from having chickens if they're a problem property.
My thought was exactly what Peter was saying. I'm sorry I didn't come across correctly. But with a permit, then the individual knows the rules that they have to follow. Without a permit, John Doe or John Q. Public can just say, I'm going to have 12 chickens. Well, that's against our ordinance. He doesn't know that, okay? Unless he has gone through the permit process.
Ignorance of the law is no excuse.
Michael, okay, I agree. But that's still, if they know it, then they don't have the ignorance of it. As far as cost, you know, if you don't want to charge, that's fine. But, you know, I do believe that you should have a permit with the rule booklet, like, or that would be on the permit process.
For a yard shed in the back?
Do you have to go through a permit?
You do?
Building permit?
Depends on square footage.
Pardon me?
Depends, sorry.
Depends on the shed's square footage.
For a chicken coop, you wouldn't need that.
You don't need a permit?
Yeah, certain decks also don't, depending on square footage. But, you know, I'm
That's beside the point.
Yeah, so I'm, are we done discussing? Are we going to open up for, is this a public hearing, right? Are we?
We're scheduling.
We're scheduling? Okay, I thought it was a public hearing.
No, this is just the first reading.
Okay.
I'd just like staff to have any direction if we want to make a change now before we get to the second hearing or second reading in a public hearing.
Can we vote on it? I mean.
Well, we can straw poll it, right? Just to see where everybody's leaning.
Okay, let's do the permit poll, right? We can do that, right? Permit or no permit, Mike?
Uh, no permit.
Peter?
Uh, permit.
Permit?
Yeah.
Roger?
No permit.
No for me. Delora?
Permit for me.
David?
No.
Permit for me.
Four to three say no permit. So is that the direction we want to give staff to do? Take that permit part out?
It would appear that way.
And going with the, did I see that? On that last part where it says revoke, we can change that maybe to say something like, at any time, the city has the authority to make you get rid of them.
Can we enforce that?
That may be a Nick question.
Yeah.
Enforcability is, I would go to our city attorney and ask them, and a recommendation on that for us.
So maybe you can find that out for us?
I can send an email to Nick. If not tonight, then tomorrow, and see what his opinion is on that.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Michaela. All right.
So I will make a motion to schedule our public hearing and second reading of ordinance 508 to amend chapter six to March 27th, 2023.
Second?
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right, next on the agenda is the public comment. So normally, this would be for items not on the agenda, but we have someone here who wants to speak about one of our items, I'm sure, so.
I just wanted to say thank you all.
Speak your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Elizabeth Daco. I just wanted to say thank you guys all for moving this forward and the discussion on everything. I know the permit thing has been going back and forth, but I really do appreciate all of the time and the discussion that you guys have put into it, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment for items not on the agenda? Okay, moving on down to the next item is 10, the written petitions and reports from special committees. 10 Hay is a request from the Friends of the Oakwood Cemetery. Parker, are you going to take this?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
The Friends of Allagans Oakwood Cemetery is hosting their 10th Living History Tour at Oakwood Cemetery, Cemetery pending council's approval tonight. For those that have attended, you know, there's a series of tours that take place over the first and, or the first Friday and Saturday in June. That will remain the same this upcoming year. The tours start at 5:00, the last one ends by 8:00. And then they also request use of the chapel at the cemetery for people to have some refreshments. And they've got some really unique items from the museum and such, too, on display for people to check out. This request of the cemetery and the chapel also comes with a request to hang a banner along the fence of the cemetery facing M-40. And then it was also included in their request letter, the possibility of hanging a banner at the corner of M-89 and M-40 where that banner system is. And like we talked about at our previous meeting, when Art in the Garden requested use of that space, starting in the next couple of weeks, the city will have all three of those banner spots. Just to remind everybody that downtown is open during construction. So we've got no other banners up in that space other than ours for the duration of construction. So that will be something to keep in mind as we're accepting this request. Any questions?
Maybe you could work with them and see if they wanted to put it somewhere else, like we had talked with Art in the Garden, and see
Yeah, that can be done.
if council wouldn't be opposed to that.
Sure.
Thank you, Parker.
You're very welcome.
Any questions? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the Living History Tour and the request from the Friends of Oakwood Cemetery, just with the caveat that the second banner, I'll speak with staff about where to place that.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda is the City Boards, Commissions, and Area Agencies. 11A1 is the Airport Advisory Board from the March meeting. Peter, are you going to speak on that?
Yeah, I'll try.
Thank you.
So we met, discussed the tree, airport tree update. We talked before about the credit union property, and it turned out, yes, our tree contractor did remove those trees. So we've been, we, the city's talked with the credit union, and it doesn't seem like we're going to have any major issues. We selected the consulting firm and put a recommendation to council. Of course, it was kind of easy. There was only one place that came in and wanted to be our airport consulting. We did discuss the results of the grass runway. We had sent out a survey just to see how many people are actually using the grass runway or want to continue use of it. It was like 10 out of how many responses? Was it like 30? I don't know how many responses we
Thirty, forty, ten is not always positive.
And we got 10 responding that, yes, they like the use of the grass runway and for it to stay. We're just working through that, on that same topic. We're still got to do the survey of the trees that are in line with the grass runway to see if we can keep the runway length. That's the minimum with the trees where they're at. So that's still going to be done. I think Paul and Newhoff will come out and do a survey with the drone as the plan, and then we'll review that after that. And a little bit of new business discussing, we had talked about jet fuel. That's the skydivers and Bernie are in discussions to try to have a private jet fuel on airport grounds. And sent them, you know, well, you're going to have to go through Eagle and look at all the different requirements on that. But so far, they're just, they still got to come back with like a full proposal to present to the city to see if we'd want to allow that out there. And the last one was the skydivers were looking to use the airport terminal as kind of the starting location for when they have skydivers come out, rather than having them go out onto the taxiways with the cars, to have them park at the terminal, meet them there, and then take them out to the, the skydiving area just to have better control on people on the airport grounds. And the last one was, we did a long discussion about aviation fuel, and that we may have to look at changes in aviation fuel in the future, but it's still way up in the air from the FAA, so that's about it.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Next on the agenda is the Historic District Commission March meeting. Mike, Peter, you're going to report on that.
We had a, one application to tear down a house, and we tabled that application because that individual was not under contract to buy the house. They were not the owner. And it just had quite a few issues.
Did, for any length of time, did you say when you were going to talk about it again or not?
Yeah, next meeting.
The next meeting, it's going to come back up, okay. Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Next on the agenda is the Downtown Development Authority March meeting. I'm going to take this. We talked about the fiscal year '24 proposed budget. Parker shared that with us. And the DDA felt like it was just kind of showing us that they supported what Parker had presented to us. It was kind of a vote, but it wasn't needed, but they felt comfortable in doing that. The next thing Parker presented to, or updated us regarding the downtown improvement project. It included the announcement, as we know now, that Milbacher is going to start March 20th. So that was real exciting, and about the groundbreaking ceremony at 11:00 a.m. on that same day. And we talked about the refuge program. Parker provided some new information regarding the proposed shared refuge program to the downtown businesses and residents. There was some concern regarding the distance of the dumpster sites, the timeline before summer, and if annual contract with Republic Services will be reimbursed if canceled midway through the service. And that was something that Parker was going to check out. It was all good news, good details, good questions. And then Parker talked about the downtown passport, shopping passport, which is what he shared with us at the study session. And then one of the comments was Ackerman, the hair works. She asked about an update regarding the idea of a recycling option to be made available at the City of Allagans Department of Public Works garage. And Steve Tibbetts recommended looking into Frankford's program that they use. It was a little more elaborate than probably what we need, but they have several dumpsters at their site labeled what goes in each one. You know, one might be cardboard, one might be plastics, one might be metals. And really, when he said it, when he's been there, you can actually see people drive up there and unload here, and pull ahead and unload here, and so it would just be getting people used to it. I know one of the concerns was the number of people that would probably use it that are not city residents. But I'm sure Doug can contest, we have people come out there and dump brush and bags of leaves, I'm sure, that do not live in the city. So I don't see that it would be any different. But that's what we discussed at the DDA. If I didn't miss anything, Parker?
I think you covered it well.
All right, great. The next item on the agenda is 11A4, the Public Spaces Commission, March meeting. Bill, would you please take this?
I most certainly will.
Thank you.
Then I discussed the tour, the Living History Tour and cemetery usage. They are ecstatic about getting the new trash receptacles, repurposing the ones from downtown, and putting them out there, replacing the blue plastic ones. They were looking forward to that. What other? Peter Savage was going to look into the cost of refurbishing the fancy fountain that's up there at the cemetery. And was also wondering about the cities, if they have an arborist that checks our trees or whatever, that they could also check those at the cemetery. Biggest discussion they had, had to deal with the trees at Pageam Field. It seemed to go on forever around that. They finally understood. They noticed that the flower boxes are going to be needed to be replaced on the Second Street Bridge. It will be fine this year, but next year, they need to be replaced. They would like them to be not as narrow as what they are this year, which would enable them to put different plantings in there and make it look a little nicer. So they would like that, if they could. Now, let's see. Parker brought up, thus, the upgrades that are going to be needed at the Griswold. And the, Griswold, what else was it? Griswold and the theater buildings. They are part of the parks and recreation. So that needs to be, want to be on their radar, what the cost of that's going to be. Anything else did I miss?
I think you covered it.
That's it.
All right, thank you, Bill. Next on the agenda is the Finance Department. 11B1, request to approve accounts payable and payroll. Roger, please.
Yes, we have accounts payable in the amount of $515,771.19 and payroll in the amount of $124,820.60 for a total disbursement of $640,591.79. I make a motion to approve accounts payable and payroll.
I saw move.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Teresa?
Yes.
On the credit card, there's 10 or so
Tracy.
10 or so credit cards on there. And it just has the amounts owed or paid on them. Can we get, who holds what cards?
Yeah, you want, normally, the credit card payment is just paid as one whole credit card. When this one got entered, it was split up into the, all of the different credit cards. So normally, when you see them on here, it's just one check for the month of the previous month. The majority of it, of the people who hold them are the department heads and supervisors. And then there's one city hall card. So it would be Doug, Doug, Jay, me, and Joel, the city hall card, and then Parker, Jeff Maury, Sean, Pauck. And then Michaela has one as the clerk. So I can get you a list or have that. I can email that to you guys if you want to, but the majority of it's the supervisors and the department heads.
Okay.
And Joel and I review them every month.
Then there was a repayment to somebody on here.
A refund, you mean?
Um, no. Um, no.
I only remember the tax refunds, so I'm looking.
Yeah, I saw the tax refunds. One was a, a name of an individual and I didn't know why we were doing a reimbursement.
If it's a reimbursement, it's normally for something that they're buying in.
Use their own money for it.
They use their own money for it because they don't have a credit card and then we reimburse them for it. I don't see who it would be, though. He said it wasn't the tax refunds, that it was a reimbursement. Does anybody else see it on here?
I only have like two pages. Are this accounts payable or is this a budget adjustment section?
No, the accounts payable came from Parker in a separate email.
Okay, yeah, cuz I was looking at the, I, I thought it was gonna be updated, Parker. Did somebody say it was gonna be updated?
And the other part is there, there's voided checks in there. Why are those, that many of them voided?
That is because um the tax payments that I make to the um other units, so the school, the ISD, the library in the county, and the state of Michigan, they were entered and then I had the report printed on the wrong date, so I had to void them and reissue them.
Okay.
If you see it, we can, you can ask at the end of the meeting when we do our table.
Have we already approved this?
So it's been moved and supported and we voted, so. Okay. Next on the agenda is eleven B two, request to adopt resolution twenty-three point zero six to authorize second quarter budget adjustments.
I will take this one.
Thank you, Tracy.
They're coming to you a little late because I had some time off in December and I'm just getting back and into the swing of things and budget stuff, so. Most of the adjustments that you see in here are either things that you guys have approved at your council meetings or things that have um adjusting to actual with some, you know, the marijuana revenue that we received and adjusting certain taxes to what they actually were. So there's some adjustments to what we're actually getting so that we can better estimate for the upcoming budget. And the rest are things you guys have approved. Our fund balances still look good and the explanations are all in there as well as our uh cash and investments for the quarter, and I can answer any specific questions if you guys have any.
Thank you, Tracy.
What is the one point eight million on the water line?
So that was, if you look at the previous quarter, I had adjust, made adjustments for the bonds that we got in. And with our new chart of accounts, we have a bond proceeds line. And then when I had set up the budgets last year, this budget was set up last year, they were just all in grants or donations or loans. So now with the new chart of accounts, it's split up. So there's grants and loans and then there's our bond proceeds line item. In the previous quarter, I had adjusted one side of that debit and credit, and then I had not taken it out of the other, so I put it into one and didn't take it out of the other, so that, taking that one point eight million out is, is making that so that it's, it's right. It's a, switching it from one line item to the other, but in two separate quarters.
Are both those line items underwater?
Yes, yep.
So we would have to look at the first quarter adjustments to see part of it and then the other part is this quarter.
Yep.
You're just shifting line items.
Right.
But we're still up one point one two five million for water after those adjustments.
After those adjustments, we're at the let me look at that page. So yes, we're still increasing
Water revenue.
Water revenue from five, our original budget of five point four to six point six.
As a result of the bond?
So the one point eight nine that we took out this time, there were previous adjustments, so. I don't, oh, actually I do have the previous adjustments right here. The net effect, including the one point eight nine million dollars, is an additional one point one two five. So that one point one two five is both the first quarter and second quarter adjustments added together. So we've got the original budget of the five point four minus this one point eight nine. It's just splitting out this, what, what the change was for this period. And where it shows the one point one two five, that's the net of the first and second quarter adjustments together.
With the one point one two five million, where did it come from?
So that, that was increasing it the period before and not having the offset.
Did it come from a bond?
Part of it, part of it was an increase to the bond part, the other part was an increase to the actual grants that we're getting, that we're applying to that, that portion. So we had, if, if we look at that, um I don't know what Joel called it in our meetings where we had the breakdown of how we were gonna apply our bonds and grants to which departments. But the adjustments I made in the first quarter were to get those to what actually we were getting, cuz we had the county money come in. So there were adjustments that were made for that, and there was the two point five million, and that had to be split between certain funds. And so all of those, if you look at, we increased on local streets, we increased it nine hundred and three thousand. We increased sewer by nine hundred and sixty-three thousand and water by one point one two five. So those are just all adjustments to where we had to split that money where, with, where the actual cost came in from Milbacher.
Okay.
And I can, I can update those sheets and explain it to you if you wanted me to email you that. But I have all the detail behind it. It's just the summary and the net effect of, of all the changes that happened.
Okay.
And I think in the budget meetings too, we planned on specifically going over those and how we came up with each number that's applied to each department, revenue and expense wise. So I'm sure we'll have that information for you guys at your budget meetings.
Okay.
Thank you, Tracy.
Yep.
Is there any more questions for Tracy?
Okay.
Get a motion, please.
I move to adopt resolution twenty-three point zero six to authorize second quarter budget adjustments.
Second.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is eleven B three, request to approve the MERS amortization extension agreement. Tracy, you taking this?
I will take this one. I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. Basically, we're, we've reached out to MERS just to um with the way that the actuaries readjust these things annually. In the past couple of years, that it was going to be north of three hundred thousand dollars that we would have to pay operationally out of the police budget every year, working up to four hundred thousands in the next, I can't rem, I don't have that in front of me, but in the next like three or four years. So we talked with MERS about doing this extension agreement, which in a real quick thing, it, it just extends it out five years, so kinda like, you know, refinancing a house or something like that. We're gonna be taking our payments and saving about thirty-four thousand a year from our operational budget. It extends it out. We're still gonna be fully funded by the year twenty forty. Oh, with the extension. Yep, twenty forty-five. So initially, they were planning, they had estimated, or the actuarial evaluations had it so that we would be fully funded by the year twenty forty. And we're still okay legally with the state and all the thing, you know, requirements that we have to become funded by twenty forty. We're just extending that out to twenty forty-five and saving some operational expenditures.
Any questions? I'm, I'm not a fan of pushing debt off to be paid later. The thirty thousand, what does that really gain the city?
I think that it helps us right now with all the improvements we have going on right now until the projects are, are done. I feel like it saves us. All of our police officers aren't gonna retire in the next, you know, five years or that to really I, I don't really feel like it's a loan. It's just a liability that we have and instead of them keeping our money, we're getting to put it where we wanna put it. That's my personal view on it. I don't know. I'm sure Joel would answer that in a whole different aspect.
And there's no cost to us for that?
No.
Doesn't the money we put in earn interest to help fund?
In that way, yeah, it would.
Okay.
Interest. But it doesn't cost us any, anymore. It doesn't cost us to, to extend this out.
Well, if there's interest not earned, then that's costing.
Yeah, I, I just thought you meant is there a cost to, to do this extension?
If I remember right, MERS interest is about nil.
Right.
It was not a very good return on investment. When you look at their, how much you have in there and how much actually gets returned, it's hardly above like five or seven percent, if I remember.
What I remember was the MERS advisor being here and he actually mentioned at that time, when you guys had this discussion, we'd like to come in and talk about this more, but I remember a graph that showed a slightly increasing investment to twenty forty and then a big drop. And I kinda like that big drop.
That's if you have, once you get fully funded, but it's
Correct. And twenty forty is where we're targeting right now. We're talking about extending that out further so we don't get to that big drop.
The, the issue is being fully funded is always a traveling goal, goal.
Yeah.
With MERS.
It's gonna change every year it changes.
Cuz if, if one person retires early or if they die, or there's so many variables that go into it that you're kind of always on a traveling goal, and I'd like to see us at seventy, eighty, ninety percent funded always so that we don't get hit with something big if something big does happen, but.
I, I would like to see us up north of ninety. I'd like to see us at a hundred. Right now, we seem to be aiming towards seventy, and I'm not a C minus kinda guy.
Yeah, I'm fine trying to push it up, but it's I think we'll have to discuss again in our budgets for next year's budget, what we wanna do with MERS and see if there's anything that can be done and how we can afford to do it and how we can push around to get more funding into it.
I think we made a commitment to our employees and we need to keep it, so I'm not in favor of this. I think we need to get that to a fully funded.
It won't affect what the employees get, though. That's the thing with this. This is the retirement investment account. It's not if any of them retire, we're not taking anything away. If they all, if five of them retired at the same time, it's gonna start costing the city more, but they're gonna get their benefit that they're guaranteed. We're not changing that at all. It's just how funded these are and the money is, you know, sitting there waiting for them to retire. And like Peter said, it's, it's always moving. I mean, we could be never be, I don't think we'll ever be a hundred percent funded. I, obviously, my goal when we started this, I used to, or when I was started as the finance director, wanting to get this fully funded. And every time I, we get to the eighty and whatever, something happens and we're back down to sixty, seventy.
Now we're choosing not to go towards that goal.
All it takes really is the actuarial, changing the actuarial tables and that's
Assumptions, yep.
Assumptions, and that's where we really
Or us underfunding it.
Underfunding, but it's it's just something to discuss because they did a big change in their actuaries, which then really, didn't that drive down our funding amount?
Yeah.
Just cuz they changed the actuarial tables. That's why, I mean, you, you can get to ninety and the following year, they could change the actuaries and you could be back down at eighty or seventy. Or you could be at ninety-five if all of a sudden the actuaries go the other way.
Could they ever go the other way?
Uh, possibly.
We have, we have at one point, and that's why they stopped funding it back, way back when, and then that's when it became a problem. They didn't fund it for so many years straight, and then we became way underfunded.
If I remember.
You always have to make those minimum payments, which we always do.
Our US life expectancy actually just recently decreased, and that's probably gonna change our actuarial tables again, but that's, that's part of it's the life expectancy, to look at who's in the plan, what their health is like, what, you know, that's why it's like, it's I'd like to see, that's why I'm like eighty, ninety, yeah. But I, I think we can discuss it even more in our budget talks to see if we wanna try to find some places to shove more in and get it up higher quicker. That's something for us to discuss to see how we can afford it and where we can shift.
And that's where I would prefer that for operational budgets, we do this and then at the end, cuz what we, what we had done before in the past when the requirements or the minimum payments weren't as much, all this is doing is making, you know, our minimum payment at two hundred thousand versus the four hundred thousand, and we can always put more in at the end of every year, cuz that's what we did before. When we had the extra money, I would put a hundred thousand or whatever, we would budget an amount if it came in and we had fifty thousand extra in that line item at the end of May or so, you know, sometimes the beginning of June. I would add that extra contribution in there of that fifty thousand, so we were actually putting it all in there. We can still make additional payments. This is just like our minimum required payment. And then we have the flexibility operationally. It's not tying us to, we have to pay this and then we're getting up to four hundred thousand dollars and we you know, have to lay someone off or get rid of a service. I mean, the, the, the police officers who retire are still gonna get their benefit. There is a ton of money in those accounts. It's just what the state requires. So this just gives us more flexibility if we want to be able, you know, if we need the thirty thousand because they find something under the roads when they start this construction project, then we're okay. And if not, then we put that extra thirty thousand, we budget it for MERS, and we can evaluate it in April and May.
I think previous city councils should have funded this more aggressively and they didn't. And I don't wanna make that same mistake for a future city council. I like our plan that gets us fully funded by twenty forty. I wish we were more aggressive, but I'm happy with that plan. I don't know why we're moving in the opposite direction. And it's us doing it. It's, don't talk about amortization. We're talking about putting less money into this retirement fund.
Is there any other questions? Any further discussion? If not, could we get a motion, please?
So moved to approve.
So moved to approve the city to do the extension agreement, and the city finance director to sign the agreement?
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign?
No.
Aye.
Motion carries four to three. Do you need a, you got it? Okay, thank you. Public Works, next on the agenda, eleven E one, request to approve the Second Amendment to the Purchase and Road Improvement Agreement between the City of Alleghen and the Roman Catholic Diocese of Kalamazoo.
Thank you. Back in December, the council approved the First Amendment, which allowed us to go out and receive bids for the project. We did get bids back in February, I believe it was. We notified the diocese's representative, the diocese's attorney, and the city attorney of the bids. Everybody's in agreement to go ahead and proceed with the project. So what we're asking now is that you all approve the Second Amendment.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions for Doug?
I'll move to approve the Second Amendment to the Purchase and Road Improvement Agreement.
I support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, eleven E two, request to accept the bid from Black Gold Transportation Incorporated for the Oakwood Cemetery Rowne Improvement Project.
We did get three bids back, and a little bidder was, is black gold for twenty-nine thousand nine ninety-one and twenty-five cents. Basically, we're just asking you to approve it. Well, I did check with the County Road Commission. They used black gold last year on A thirty-seven and a few other projects, and they approved of the project, of the contractor, so we, uh, we recommend you approve the contractor.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions? Could I get a motion, please?
So moved.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Eleven E three, request to approve Brian Neuhoff as consultants for the airport capital improvement projects. Doug?
M.D.A.R.O. requests that we receive responses to a request for qualifications. Uh, they did provide us with a boilerplate RFQ. We did post it on M.D.A.R.'s website and the city website. We did get one response, and that was Brian Neuhoff. Uh, Brian Neuhoff has worked satisfactorily for the city since nineteen ninety-seven, and we recommend, uh, the reward.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions? Could I get a motion, please?
I'll move to approve Brian Neuhoff as consultants for the airport capital improvement projects.
Second.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Next on the agenda is, uh, city manager and city clerk, request to approve an agreement with the City Conservation District. Parker, you gonna take this?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and take this one, and then if there are questions that I can't answer, I hope Doug might chime in too, if needed. But, uh, this agreement was discussed at the study session, um, of your previous meeting, so, uh, hopefully it looks a little familiar to you, but if you need a refresher, there is a diagram of what the Alleghen Conservation District is proposing for the, uh, former community garden at, uh, the end of Trowbridge Street. I shouldn't say the end, but the corner of Trowbridge and Cedar, as well as a list of, uh, agreements, uh, between the City of Alleghen and the Alleghen Conservation District.
Thank you, Parker. Any questions?
Does this cost the city anything? There any cost incurred by the city?
Nope.
Providing water.
We're providing water.
Providing water, yep.
Yep. We're gonna support them to make that corner look really nice, so, um, that's exciting to me.
I think there was some staff time if they needed to help in any way.
Yeah, if they need to move some, say, DPW, move something or... Any other questions? Could I get a motion, please?
I move to approve the agreement with Alleghen Conservation District.
I second.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda is, um, communication from city manager, council, and mayor. Staff, do you have anything? Doug, anything else from you? Tracy?
I don't have anything else to add.
Parker?
Uh, just another reminder about that groundbreaking ceremony on Monday. If you're able to make it at eleven o'clock, it'd be great to see, uh, swath of council there, so...
Michaela?
Um, if everyone could just, uh, let me know what day works for them, if they plan to attend the Community Exchange Day. Let me know either way, um, and then I will send something out as soon as I, um, am able to figure out which day would work best.
Thank you, Michaela. Bill, do you have anything?
I do. Um, I should have brought this up at the roundtable, but at our committee meeting, they complained that they weren't giving a heads up on what was happening with the trees. Could, uh, staff give the heads of each department a heads up of what's going around? Parker, you were there. You remember, they were complaining about that.
Yeah, um, yeah, that's something that, uh, we, you know, make an effort to do. There are some items that, this one's been in such a long period of discussion over the last couple of years, um, this project of the tree clearing, um, that that wasn't something that was on my radar to share with the public spaces, but they made it evident that, uh, you know, decisions like that is something that they wanna be kept abreast of, so that's certainly something that we'll continue to do.
I think all the committees, just not public spaces.
Oh, yeah, 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 most definitely.
They should all be kept abreast of what's going on, so, that's it.
Dave, do you have anything else?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Thank you. Laura?
I just had a question whether our water department has found that major water leak. Do we know? Okay, have they, so it's still like one hundred and seventy-five gallons, miss?
I'm not too knowledgeable about it. I just know that when we met this morning, uh, the department heads, and Tracy asked Michaela and I to sit in on that meeting too this morning, um, Doug Sures, uh, just said that it had not been located at this time. There, that amount of water is still being lost, so...
Thanks. And then Doug, I just had a question for you. I saw on the public spaces minutes that they had brought up some damage to roads and, like, lawns from plowing. Did you guys have, like, a list of any of that? Did, was that provided to the DPW, or...
No, this is another thing that... Yeah, to use Bill's words, um, but it's also something that I know that, uh, Joel and Doug and Jeff have, uh, discussed even prior to it being brought up at the Public Spaces Commission meeting. I don't know what the, the plan is going forward, but I know that it's something that they are aware of, the DPW.
That's all, thank you.
Mike, do you have anything?
Uh, nothing today.
Peter?
Roger.
Just really pumped that streetscape starts, uh, next Monday. I mean, it's been so long coming, and finally here, so, excited.
And I don't have anything either. So it is eight oh six, and I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.